I'll now call to order the July 23rd, 2020 business meeting. And ask the county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes Chair, first our staff support today, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council, and the rest of our support team, Dylan Blaylock, Christina Twiliger, Rich Marvin, and Garrett Teague. Role call, Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Humberton.
Here.
Okay, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us today. We're holding our meeting virtually. Probably getting kind of used to this. If you joined us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Or, anyone can send a comment to and to be read during the public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it at any time during the meeting at clackamas, clacko news@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and the area which you live. Gary, turning it over to you.
Thank you Chair. We begin with COVID-19 updates. First with Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Assistant Commander of our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead Nancy.
Thank you, and I do have Dr. Sarah Present with me here today, who is our Health Officer of Clackamas County. So, going to go through our numbers today. So here in Oregon, we have 15,393 positives with 271 deaths. There are 337,401 negatives. Clackamas County has 1,181 positives, which is up 40 from Wednesday. 33 deaths, which is up 3 from Wednesday. 32,629 negatives. Multnomah County has 3,678 positives. That is up 112 since Wednesday. 76 deaths, which is up 1. 74,725 negatives. Washington County has 2,319 positives, which is up 73 from Wednesday. 22 deaths, which is up 1. 47,600, I mean, I'm sorry, 47,460 negatives. Statewide, we have 166 that are hospitalized, which is up 11 from Wednesday. Forty-eight of those are in ICU beds, 28 are on ventilators. Statewide, we have 150 ICU beds, adult ICU beds that are available. That is out of 778. And we have 779 ventilators available statewide. Governor Brown did make some announcements yesterday for some new statewide rules. They do include face coverings for ages 5 and up. All restaurants and bars, regardless of what phase the county is in, is to close at 10 to 10 o'clock at night. Face coverings are required when exercising indoors and outdoors when you cannot be more than six feet or more from the other individuals. For Phase 2 counties, the capacity limit for restaurants, gyms, and other revenues like theaters, those types of things, is reduced to 100 people. And that does include staff. Our PIOs are here in the EOC, are working, have updated the webpage with the county programs and the openings we have here at the county. Again, we do encourage anyone who is wanting to make an appointment or come into any county programs to please call before they come in to, if they had, if they need an appointment and what time our hours are. And also to see any of our programs that are open, you can go to the main coronavirus page here for Clackamas County. We are PIOs as well as our behavioral health are working on suicide prevention messaging as we're seeing suicides increase during this time. And we, our Business Assistant Grant applications are in and they are starting the review process. Will be working with those small businesses as they go through the process. We're also working, getting PPE to small businesses as well as CBOs here in our county. Public health is seeing a delay in testing results, which is right now looking 10 to 12 days. Which of course is impacting contact notifications. Our learn-term care facilities, we're doing some mass testing. They're required to test all staff and residents, which is also uncovering some cases. And, public health continues to look at and revise the workplace tool that we're providing. And we are continuing to work with schools. And there was a meeting last night between our public health staff and the school board. So we do have our new health indicators for Phase 2. And Dylan, if you would bring that up for me. I'll just go through this really briefly and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Present. So you'll see the Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington County line. So they've, we are, as a region, we're missing four of the six. Includes an uptrend in tests that are positive in the last seven days. Thirty-eight percent of our cases in the last seven days have increased in positive tests. Our percent of cases not traced to a known source is now at 55%. And you see 91%, we actually fell below the 95% in the region for a follow-up within 24 hours. Clackamas County is now missing one of the six, which is the percent of cases not traced to a known source in the last seven days. And I know Dr. Present's going to talk about that number just a little bit more. Dylan, if you'll please go down to Multnomah County. Multnomah County is actually, this 85% should be actually a red X. So they are now missing four of the six. So they have the uptrend, the percent of cases that are coming back positive is 52%, 62% of cases that cannot be traced to a known source, as well as 85% of contacts within 24 hours. And if you're going down, please to Washington County. And here we have, they, Washington County, actually, the 100% over here on the far right, or the other right-hand side should be a green checkmark. So they are missing these, the four of six. So they have the uptrend in positives in the last seven days. Increase in new cases in the last seven days, it's now 38% percent of cases not traced to a known source is 38%, and they do have an uptrend here in hospitalizations. So if you go back up to the top for me. From here, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Present for her, her presentation and analysis.
Nancy, and thank you Chair Bernard and Commissioners for having me here again on a Thursday morning. I enjoy being able to talk with you and, and answer questions. I have a brief update today. Excuse me. And a little tickle in my throat, but I'm not ill, I promise. So, I, I like to give you a little bit more detail on more updated numbers. So I have some information from July 15th to July 21st of our Clackamas case evaluations. I always want to give the caveat that this is preliminary information, and as investigations go on, oftentimes we find out more information. But it's a little bit more updated from what you see in the, in the OHA releases. So it is preliminary, it may change more. But it gives you a better idea of what we're doing kind of this week. We, in the last, July 15th to July 21st, 116 cases were reported to us. It does feel like it's been a little bit slower. Last week there were 138 cases, so that's a little bit, a little bit less. But I am a little bit concerned that we may be missing case numbers based on test result delays. And I will talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Of those 116 cases, 10 were household contacts and nine were known close contacts. So 19 were identified, cases were identified with known close contact to another case. And that's about 16% of the total. What I find concerning about these cases is that all of them reported having other contacts. So I can't tell you the details about, you know, if all of these were close household contacts that then reported similar household contacts to the initial case? Or if these were people who should have been quarantining, who were not, who then had four other close contacts? But it's an average of four close contacts per case of the ones that were already linked to another case. So people who should be quarantining, who maybe, who exposed others. These are just concerns based on the numbers. I don't have the details of, of the cases here, so. Just bringing up my questions and concerns, so you know where I'm thinking. Of the 116, 20 were outbreak-related. Nineteen of those were primary and one was a secondary case in an outbreak. Of those, there was an average of three and a half contacts identified per case. And then 77 or 66% of our total cases within the last week were sporadic, so. Meaning that we were not able to identify a source. They didn't know of somebody that had been infected that they were in contact with, so. That's a suggestion of the amount of community widespread where you don't know where you got the disease. And that's reflected in the numbers that we just had up of an increase in that, and I'm not, I'm not surprised, I think that in the last couple of weeks, as we've been talking, we have generally been seeing increased community spread. And again, there was some of that to be expected with, with reopening. And again, of those, an average of three and a half contacts, close contacts identified per case. So on average, with all of our 116 cases, there are a total of 314 close contacts identified, which is an average of 3.6 close contacts per case. So that's a slight increase from the last couple of weeks. As far as testing, so there are two big concerns that we have in our testing limitations right now in the region, and Clackamas County is certainly feeling it. So test results from Quest and LabCorp are still delayed, and many of our outpatient clinics, including our own FQHC, use that. I don't know what the average time is, but I have heard recently, we were up to 16 days without a test result in our health, the health center's patient. And that is due to LabCorp having a national strain on their testing. In addition, our health systems who may have their own in-house tests have severe shortages in testing reagents. And so the testing capacity is decreasing. And I know that our health systems are evaluating whether prioritization of testing within the hospitals needs to change based on this. So, as we have decreased testing capacity, that affects our public health approach to the pandemic in a number of ways. One of my main concerns right now is how many tests are, or how many cases are out there that don't know that they're positive. So I just want to reiterate that if you are getting a test, if you're concerned about being ill and to the point that you do get a test, you should assume it's positive and isolate until you have that result. And talk to your close contacts, your household contacts, and ask that they do quarantine as a precaution until you have the test results. So we, we cannot assume that things are negative and go about our business if we are waiting a week or more for the test results. That, that risks increased spread of the disease before we know where it is. And with that, I will stop and take questions.
Hey Paul, and then Ken.
Well, thank you Nancy and Dr. Present for your, your comments and data today. Dr. Present, last Tuesday, I broached the idea of why don't we ask people to basically volunteer or provide all the contacts they've been in with when they're being tested? Or when they apply for a test or in that process and you know, not that they necessarily need to do it while they're in line, or, or before, or, or hope, but hopefully between directly after or in the very short term. And it seems to me that that would put us in a, or everyone in a, in a far better position number one, fix that number that we're in the red on today as far as those being traced within seven days, because it gives you a head, a head start. And secondly, with, with computerization and data, data crunching that can be done. And, and also retaining the privacy aspects. A lot of that can be entered in a database and if, let's say, 20 people you know, put in a name or a contact that they've been in with. And it's the same, that that, that might be someone who's not even being tested. That could be, that could be drawn to. Anyhow, what I'm, what I'm really saying is that we, there, there's a lot to be learned and we have the technology frankly to do that. It seems to be a no-brainer, especially if it's in the, in the best interest of public health and the community at large. So before I go any farther, I just want to get your input on that.
I think it's a a really interesting idea. And I think that my answer is not, not going to be very pleasing. We've, at the, at the early stages of the pandemic, when we had smaller cases per day, I actually worked a lot with some of our health systems to try to encourage them to get the information that public health needed. So that we could identify higher priority cases earlier. For example, asking if you are in a congregate living set, setting. And that was at a point where the health systems were still able to call us with each case and give us the information. Or when our team had the time to look into their medical records to find the details that were there. Unfortunately, as the case numbers have increased and the workload has increased on both sides, the ability to communicate that information, even if it's received from the health center, the ability to communicate it to the public health staff has been strained in a number of different ways that are, that are technology-related, they are privacy-related. You know, our, our database is unable to share information securely with the health systems based on, on, on some statutory laws around private, public health privacy being different than HIPAA. So there are a number of, of techno, tech, we, we do have technology out there, but figuring out how to make it work for us in that way has, has proved to be surprisingly challenging. And, there are several of us who are trying to figure out the interaction between especially primary care and public health better, and to use the opportunity of this pandemic to point out some of the highlights of, of where the system is, is struggling in order to have that communication open and helpful. So that's not a great answer, but I have tried similar things and we've hit some roadblocks.
Well, it sounds like, I appreciate that, thank you. It sounds like maybe if I'm summarizing it, that you know, with, it sounds like that it's possible if, number one, we take the precautions, the privacy issues, and we also get the right technology or the folks that are wrapped around that to develop, develop a program and do it, that's possible.
I believe there are possibilities there. I'm struggling to figure out the right ways to do it, so maybe we could talk more about that.
All right, well, well, thank you for that. I, I just want to just kind of review the numbers that I've been doing, and that's like every time we meet, you know, how many cases have been. So last Thursday when we met, since that point in time, coming from the OHA, the numbers, Clackamas County has, has 131 new cases. Multnomah County, 609 since last Thursday. That's a, quite the multiplier from where we are, in Washington County, 332. And, as I listened to the governor yesterday in her press conference and I, and as I understand, I didn't sit in for all of it during the Q and A, but I understand that there was a question asked to the governor about decoupling. And I, as I understand, I got, I don't have it. Actually, I need to go back and read it, because I think there is a transcript of that. I don't know what, I heard your response was, was, was basically a no. I'll, I'll, I'll double-check that. But with that, with that, as that the case, which is quite unfortunate, and the indicators, Nancy, that you displayed for us, you know, it's, it's certainly clear that we are not the same. And because this trend, this trend of the numbers has been in place from the, almost from the beginning, we start tracking the numbers. This is not a new trend. I mean, and the trend I'm talking about here specifically is that our numbers have been, been far lower than our neighboring two counties. So the rationale that somehow we're all connected and, and, and therefore we're all affected and it'll spread, isn't true. Because by now, the numbers would be homogenous, if you will. It would be very similar, but they're not. So it's very clear that whatever we're doing here, or whatever we're not doing, but whatever's going on in Clackamas County is unique. And, and, you know, I, I think that we ought to be treated as such. And, or, another way to look at it is, whatever they're doing in Multnomah County is really going bad, and that ought to be, for the, in the best interest of Clackamas County and the state, ought to be looked into. Why is it so, why is it so poor? And, and I, I just think those all big answers. Those are questions that I'm not asking you today. It puts you in a, in a difficult position. But I, I think it really begs the question, our numbers have consistently been significantly different and down. As I, as I, as I understand that the tri-county chairs, when they meet, they're, they're not, they're not apparently offering any assistance or even a letter to suggest, or, or to suggest we decouple. Or, any letter suggesting or asking that the governor release the funds on our behalf. So I don't see how regionally we're, we're being assisted or treated fairly through this whole thing in multiple ways, and not, not of which is, is any, not, you know, has nothing to do with your work, Nancy, or your work, Dr. Present. And no response needed on that one. I, I, I just think it really bears, in the interest of public health, it really bears a, a looking into. Because, because this, at the rate that they're going, and as close as we are, I'm, I'm very concerned. And I would also encourage, and I want to thank everyone in Clackamas County who's looked, who's taken the precautions, who's wearing the mask. And, you know, we need to work together to turn that last one green. And we need to do our best and continue to do what we're doing that's successful. And, and I just, I, I, I just think that the rest of the state ought to, or especially our neighboring counties ought to follow the lead, or, or find out what's going wrong in those counties. Thank you.
Ken.
Yes. Nancy, I wasn't able to write fast enough to get the bed information. Would you give, send that information? I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then, it's my understanding that it is legal to send tests to out-of-state labs that have been certified. Are we doing that? And if we aren't, can we take a look at that possibility? Maybe we can get a faster turnaround if we take some of the load off of the local labs and start using some of the labs in neighboring states? Or other states in general? Some states seem to have plenty of testing capacity.
The, the, where each health system or individual clinic sends their labs is up to them and their contracts. But we did have a HAN alert that came from the Oregon Health Authority within the last week, which is a health alert network, the HAN, with some recommendations around other labs that people might want to look into. So we did get that communication out to our, our health systems. Including the, the University of Washington State lab, I think has better better capacity. So, excellent idea, and we're, we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you. Jim, your mark's off.
There, there will be an editorial, Paul, which asks the governor, why is Clackamas County not getting its share of the money? This isn't fair. They're tying us with Multnomah and Washington County. We're doing a better job, but we don't have the money. We anticipate a $45 million expense. We don't have the money. So how can you ask us to do the same work they do, they're doing? We don't have the money. So, step up.
I, I, I appreciate that Jim, but the fact that we don't have the money and we're also doing so well is, is significant enough of a question. It begs the question. It really does. It begs the question, what is wrong? What's going wrong? And that's not on our end. It's on their end. And also, the other question that really begs an answering is, why have, why are we not getting a, an adequate response from the governor as to why we're not receiving the money? It, it, it has, it has to be answered. It's, it's, the fact that it's going unanswered is just drawing a lot of curiosity, I don't have, for me. I, I just think it's just wrong not to receive a legitimate answer.
So my letter will be in the Oregonian, Pamplin News, and Pamplin Newspaper and the Mount Hood Times. It's not in there yet, but it'll be there. Sonia.
Yeah, I just want to caution our communication about saying that Clackamas County is doing so well. We have a substantial number of people who've contracted this virus. We have care facilities that have had, you know, almost all of their residents contacting, contracting the virus. We've had multiple deaths. We're not doing well. And the piece that I really want everyone to listen to that Dr. Present told us is that the is sometimes two weeks or over two weeks to get back. We don't know what this week really is. So while all of those little numbers look green, they may not actually be green. The number that very much concerns me is the community spread, which is very high. So I just want to caution our communication, we're, we're not doing so well. And also, keep in mind that Multnomah County, I looked it up today, has 812,000 residents as of 2019, and Washington County has 601,592 as of 2019. So where their numbers are more, they also have great, much greater populations.
I saw in one report, the number for cases per 10,000 on the website, I think OHA.
Oh, I have it here for 100K. So Clackamas County has 286.3 per 100,000. Multnomah County is 460.8. Washington, Washington County is 388.3. That's per 100,000 population.
So it's still disproportionate?
Yeah.
It's still disproportionate. And, and I, I take Commissioner Fisher's comments. Oh, actually, Commissioner Schrader had something to say. Everyone.
Yes. Martha. Microphone.
I just had a question about the testing, Dr. Present, because what I'm hearing is anecdotally from a, of folks who I know who live in Washington State, they're, they're able to get like tests within a one-day turnaround. So is that true? And if so, what, what are they doing differently than what we're doing?
I, I, I don't know. I think, so for, for example, our health systems that have the, their in-house test, if they have the reagents for it, they can have a quick turnaround. So it's some of the larger, the larger labs that are having a longer turnaround, and I believe it's, it's a shortage in the, the testing reagents. And so if the Washington State lab has enough, then they can get that processed quickly. But I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know all the details about, about all the different.
Yeah, and as I said, it's anecdotal, you know, but but that, I'm kind of wondering what's that disparity about, and what's going on in the whole logistics and the systems that, if that's so. So I, I can only verify it anecdotally. But I don't know if there's any data out there from them that might verify that. I'm not sure what they're doing differently. And in terms of who gets infected per thousand, I mean, I do think that I wonder if it has to do with the fact that we have larger, open rural areas and our density, densities aren't aren't as equal. And I think that that certainly, not that I want to get us off track, but when we have counties or, or a regional area that's pushing density policies, this is kind of an interesting twist in things, because the trend now seems to be people moving away from those dense centers of cities. And I did talk to the business group yesterday, GPI, and not only that, but you're seeing the downtown business core in Portland, as well as other cities, pretty much not, either going under or leaving and moving to the suburbs. So, just some other interesting things. I don't want to get us off track, I'm sorry.
Welcome to Clackamas County, is what I say. Paul.
Yeah, so I, again, I wanted to just say, I, I don't disagree with the Yeah, so I, again, I wanted to just say I, I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Fisher's comments about we're doing so well. It's, it's not well that anyone is sick in Clackamas County. And so. Uh, I appreciate that. I guess what I was really speaking about, make, make it perfectly clear is, is comparatively the disproportion. That our numbers are far better and I, you know, I have to use the word better, they are better. Um, so uh, uh, that is a, a note taken um, on that, but I, to Commissioner Fisher's, not Commissioner Schrader's point, that is. Um. Asking for the why, I think is really important because if it, if it's true, all the numbers I'm hearing nationally is that. If dense, if density and transit. Are the two largest contributors, as I hear the CDC somewhat is suggesting because the data is showing that out. Then that's something that we ought to be learning from. And if that's the case, that's another reason maybe that we ought to be decoupled. And frankly, possibly disconnected from, at, at least for a while temporarily. Because i- if, if, if transit is contributing to that, maybe we ought to just think about temporarily. Um, uh, making sure we take extra precautions or, 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 or limit the use of transit.
Yeah, but there'd be a lot of people who wouldn't be able to go to work or do anything. Without transit. Uh. Anyway, so anything else from them, uh, Gary from Nancy and Dr. President?
I know, well, we're ready to move on to the emergency declaration if you're ready, although I'll ask Nancy to stay if you don't mind. Sir, Dr. President, you're welcome, or you can depart for choice.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Uh, next is approval of amend, addendum number four to resolution number twenty twenty dash fourteen, declaring a local state of emergency regarding COVID nineteen. Stephen Magcor, County Council, will present and Nancy and I are here to assist as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Morning Commissioners. What we have before you for your consideration and hopeful approval. Is a addendum number four to the emergency declaration that the board initially. Adopted back in March twenty twenty. We have, the board has extended it. On an incremental basis, the current one expires on July thirty first at the end of this month. This addendum extends it to September twelfth. We're picking September twelfth because the board will be on recess at the end of August and this will give ample time. For the emergency declaration to stay in place during your recess period. This addendum adds two additional emergency measures. We currently have. Adopted twelve previous ones, which will remain in place, in force and effect. Number thirteen, before you for your consideration. Will authorize the county and all of its special districts. To hold meetings virtually, such as this one. Our code has requirements for in-person meetings with cross-examination and things like that for code enforcement. And other land use matters. This emergency declaration measure would allow those functions to be carried out. By Zoom, telephone conferencing, or other electronic or virtual meetings. Number fourteen. Is a proposal that came from planning and it reads in its title. For commercial, industrial and industrial uses. The Board of County Commissioners may agree to waive provisions of the zoning and development ordinance. To authorize temporary uses or temporary modifications. To existing developments. To facilitate self-confidence and other requirements of the governor's COVID nineteen related executive orders. It's been reported that the county has received three to five requests for such modifications from. Religious organization and maybe clinics and restaurants, and this would allow these operations to continue. With some mild modification of current land use restrictions. Those items would come to the board. On a case-by-case basis, it does allow for some flexibility to be allowed in those situations. Those are the only two additional measures. And again, if approved by the board, this would extend all previously declared emergency measures until September twelfth. Twenty, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Any questions? I'm not seeing any. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve addendum number four to resolution number twenty twenty dash fourteen, declaring a local state of emergency regarding COVID nineteen.
Second.
It's been seconded by everybody.
Yep.
Moved and seconded by everybody. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, wait, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're ready to move on away from COVID unless there are any other final comments or questions for staff. Seeing none. Thank you Nancy very much. Uh, we're ready to move on. Chair, if you'd like to announce, uh.
I will. I'll announce that the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And please bring Ann Lenzstra in. And Ann is our Housing Authority Commissioner.
Yes, and as staff is coming in, Commissioners, you have two housing authority discussion items. The first. Is approval of three project proposals recommended by the Housing Authority of Clackamas County staff. And submitted in response to the twenty twenty notice of funding availability. For Metro Affordable Housing Bond funding and authorization to move forward. To move it for, to move to forward to Metro for concept endorsement. Sorry. Uh, we have Jill Smith, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, along with Rich Swift and Stephen McMurtry to present.
And I'm sorry, I don't see Ann Lindstrom yet.
She may not have made it.
I saw her earlier though, so. I'll watch for her.
Okay. Go ahead.
Stephen, Stephen McMurtry, our Director of Housing Development, is going to lead this discussion.
Yes, uh, thank you. Good morning, Chair. Good morning Commissioners. Thanks for having us back again today to discuss these two, uh, really critical and important items on the Housing Authority's. Agendas. We're trying to move these projects forward. First, I'd like to start with. The approval of the three project proposals recommended by, uh, the Housing Authority staff. And submitted in response to the twenty twenty notice of funding availability. From the Metro Affordable Housing Bond. And, uh, give some quick highlights if I can, as a reminder of where we're at today. Um. On January twenty second, twenty twenty, the Housing Authority staff in conjunction with our Housing Advisory Board released the NOFA. Uh, a notice of funding availability, availing thirty-five percent of Clackamas County's total bond resources or forty point six seven million dollars for projects sponsored by nonprofit. And for drop profit developers for the purpose of, uh. Constructing new units within the eligible metro boundary in our county. In addition to those bond funds, HAC allocated a hundred and twenty-five project-based section eight vouchers. The NOFA was structured and delivered using our local implementation strategy and Metro's Affordable Housing Bond framework. As the key metrics for successful project award. Uh, we received initially five projects for a total of six hundred and eleven units, seeking over sixty-nine million dollars in bond resources or over prescribed. Uh, HAC's preliminary review committee and our housing, in conjunction with our Housing Advisory Board, conducted a thorough review of each project. And was recommending that three of those projects move forward, uh, for concept endorsement, as was mentioned earlier. The recommended projects are located in Happy Valley, Oregon City, and unincorporated Clackamas County. Proposing a total of four hundred and thirteen units and representing fifty-one percent of the county's total bond goal of eight hundred and twelve units. Requesting a total of forty-four million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand in bond funds and exactly one hundred and twenty-five project-based vouchers. These three projects include. A to, total of two hundred and ninety-two units that are two-bedroom and above, which satisfies seventy-two percent of the target goal of four hundred and six units under the bond. A hundred and fifty-three units reserved for households with incomes of thirty percent AMI below, which satisfies forty percent of the target goal of three hundred and thirty-three units under the bond. And in conjunction with our, uh, Webster Road project. Which we'll be talking about next, means that we will have met a total of sixty percent of our requirement. Under the Metro Affordable Housing Bond, while only using forty-four percent. Of our overall allocation, which I think is tremendous work on staff and everybody and great proposals that we have coming forward. And with that. Uh, re, restating what we've all talked about before, I'd like to open it up if there were any additional questions. And again, staff is recommending that the, the Housing Authority Board, uh. Approve the three recommended project proposals and authorize staff to forward them to Metro for concept endorsement.
Uh, I'm gonna go to Sonia in a second, but the one on, um. Uh, near the transit centers on the west side of two oh five, correct?
That is, uh, yes, correct.
Technically, that's not Happy Valley, uh, but it, it zip code is. So. It's unincorporated Clackamas County.
That is correct.
Just want to be clear on that. Sonia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if others have questions. Um, I'm ready to make a motion unless there are other questions. I did want to. What was that?
Paul has a question.
Okay, I just want to make a comment, um, so that the rest of my Commissioners can benefit from. From my experience over this last week. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me this extra week to spend some time with Stephen and Jill and Rich. But mostly Stephen, really getting in and explaining the, um. Framework that is prescribed for us from the state and through the Metro bond dollars that really creates some. Pretty good checks and balances that I'm very, was very pleased to get that in-depth tutorial. So thank you, Stephen. And the other piece that I understand. Is that, as Stephen just said, is this, we are approving this for concept. Development or concept approval for Metro. Which means that we will continue, um, Clackamas County will continue to work with these developers. And while these proposals definitely, um, are something to be celebrated for Clackamas County. For sure, and for the region, we, and they meet so well. The, um, goals that we laid out in our local implementation strategy. I do want us to, um, approve these today with the. Suggestion that as this process moves forward, that our staff have the flexibility to meet all of the. Targeted goals, including mixed income, if that is feasible. Don't want to stop these projects, want to keep them moving, but want to make sure that we. Allow that for our staff and that fits well within, um, there's lots of work still to be done. So. I think that will all fit well. But that's what I wanted to say, and with that, we'll go ahead and get the other questions answered.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, um, so, um, Stephen, I, you, I, I like what you said, um, but I want clarity. Um, you mentioned we're gonna, we're meeting sixty percent of the requirements. Uh, and using forty-four percent of the resources, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that, that is correct. Our, of our total resources, that includes our, our Webster Road project that's being lumped in in some of those numbers as well.
Right. So I want, I want to go back to, I want it, because there is a distinction between the resources and also the goals of, uh, uh, that are. More about the mix of types of housing for different type income levels. So. So let's just separate the requ, the, the, the money part from the, from the goals of the measure. So, um, are we proportionally meeting sixty percent of the goals as, as it, as we talk about the mix of income? Targets, for example?
Well, the sixty percent amount is in direct reference to the, the zero to thirty percent requirement. So we are sixty percent of the way with these three projects. We'd be sixty, and, excuse me, and with Webster. We'd be sixty percent of the way there towards that requirement with Metro under the framework and the LIS.
Okay. Is it fair maybe to presume then that in order to meet the goals of the other? You know, workforce housing, so on, the higher income. Of that mix, that that might be more expensive? To accomplish, um, with the remaining forty-four percent of the, remaining fifty-six percent of the resources?
I think that it's fair to say that though, that, yeah, accomplishing, getting those units that are above sixty percent of area median income. Uh, and the eighty-one units that we have been, uh, allowed to use to serve that workforce. Uh, income percentage, that yes, I think that those, by and large, those units may be more expensive.
So essentially, we're, because of the, the, uh, so we're, in essence, the low hanging fruit is much easier to accomplish as far as. A- as far as this level, uh, maybe that's not the best terms to use. Um. All right, so in. Though, these are all a concept, so. Um. Is it, is there, as far as a flexibility in the future, if this is approved by Metro, so on, so forth? Are we poised to be the owner of these units?
Not for these particular projects, no. These are not projects that we would be the owners of.
Uh, so by, by definition, but we are the developer?
No, these are being developed, this particular bond allocation, this NOFA that we put out was specifically for project partners. To come and bring their concepts to Clackamas County for the utilization, utilization of the bond money that's been put out there. We are acting solely in the role of a lender in this situation. These are not units that would be owned or controlled by the Housing Authority. Or Clackamas County unless it was suggested by our project partner, partners. That we partner with them in some way, and that has not been directly asked of us thus far.
Okay, so for what, what period of time will these, will these be committed for, um. For low income? I mean, is there, is there a sixty-year commitment, a thirty-year commitment?
Yeah, under the, both the framework of the bonds and the use that we're, and, and the fact that we're using low income housing tax credits, there will be a sixty-year minimum affordability term.
So what, what happens in year sixty-one? Is that anyone's guess?
Um, well, I mean, in, in, it's year sixty-one. I, I can't speak to anybody's age, but I'm probably not answering that question at year sixty-one. Um, I, what it would mean in the strict descent is the affordability covenant that's associated with those properties could be released. What I can say from my own experiences in this industry for quite a while now is that you will see, uh, regular reinvestments in these units over time. They, that, um, you know. So at, usually at the end of their first twenty-year. Permanent loan term, you will see, uh, a reinvestment in these to. Continue them as affordable housing, so bringing new debt and new equity sources. To do any necessary rehab or updates at that point in time. But at the end of year sixty, it's a long-winded way of saying at the end of year sixty, in fact, the affordability covenant would expire. Um. If, uh, if somebody at that point in time, if the sponsor still, uh, wanted to maintain them as affordable housing, they'd go, keep going.
Hey, Paul, I'll let you know when I get there.
I'm good.
Great, great. So if, if there's no other questions, I'm happy to make the motion. I can't hear you, Jim.
I wanted to add something, uh, I gotta remember what it is. Uh, so we're not giving them a tax abatement. Property tax abatement for sixty years. Are we?
Um, the, the, we, at, right now, we're a concept endorsement. Uh, we don't know, I mean, at this point in time, that has not been directly requested of us. I anticipate that these. That, that at least, whether it's all three of these projects or other projects in the future may come forward to ask that of us. Um. You know, that is something that we'll, we'll be looking at.
Well, that, i- in that case, I could see why we might want to own them in sixty years, like we have with, uh, PetCor, for example. And some of our other projects. And like you said, we do rein, in some of our projects, we've reinvested, refinanced and added years to it. But, uh, yeah, I, you know. I don't know if I'll be here when they're ready to ask for their tax abatement. But I wouldn't do what we did in PetCor in the, and give them all those years, uh, tax abatement. I. Uh, hopefully, we think through that since the Metro money is paying for a lot of this. Uh, I would be concerned about giving them a sixty-year tax abatement, for example.
I would, I, I, I agree with that. That was one of my issues that I had with the PetCor project, was that very one, Jim? So I appreciate you bringing that up. And I, I hope that's something we actually spent some time on. Um. Uh, I think we have to look at the long-term impacts to the county, um. Just, just as an owner of the facility, would look at the long-term impacts of maintaining the building and, and the, and the housing type. Um, and all those other aspects, and everyone has to look in the long term, um, how that impacts. Um, uh, the requirements for services and so on.
All right, so we got Martha and Ken?
Yeah, so I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work. And, and I want to say something about us. You know, guys. I know PetCor, none of this is going to be perfect or ideal. It's just because of the way it is. It has to do with market, it has to do with what. What we can pull together and how you pull together and, and I. what we can pull together and how you pull together, and, and I really think that we just need to trust the people that are the experts who know how to do this, okay? None of us ever gonna be exactly what we want. So what? PetCor, sixty years. We got two hundred and twelve units we wouldn't have had otherwise. Oh, well. I mean, oh, well. Okay, I, yeah, it would have been better if we couldn't, but what shoulda, woulda, coulda. And as far as the middle-income housing, it's all about the financing and how you can do that. And that there are limits because of the package that we've had, you know, that we've given from Metro. So, thank you, guys. You've done a good job. I really appreciate it. And yeah, it's our job to, like, question things, but good gosh, do we always have to beat a dead horse to death? You know, I'm just saying. So thank you for getting some of these units on the ground as quickly as we can, and it's not, it's not ever gonna be. Yeah, I mean, it's just the nature of how you have to do this kind of housing, I think. So, anyway, uh, that's my, uh, two cents in, in a very cranky way for me. So, okay. Thanks.
Ken?
Yeah, I just have to say that, you know, my number one priority, as I said last, last time we had this conversation, and, and I've talked to Sonya about this on numerous occasions. My number one priority is getting people off the street and under, and under a roof. And I realize, as Martha has just said, that there is no perfect financing solution to doing that. There, so, you know, we have to, we have to be able to adjust as best we can, uh, to meet this need. Um, I do have a question of Stephen, um, and it comes to mind because of Jim's comment about, um, uh, tax abatement. This is just first process of, of applying for the monies that are available to start some projects. Obviously, from what Stephen has said, um, we could get asked about a tax abatement. My question is, if we don't do a tax abatement, do you think that kills the project? Um, you know, what's your assessment of the impact of somebody asking for that on these projects going forward?
Well, I appreciate that, uh, question, Commissioner. Uh, the, and then I'm gonna give one of these extremely squishy answers, which is, it depends. I, I, I mean, over this last week, over this last week, I've had in-depth conversations, not only with several of you, with staff, with the project developers themselves. I mean, this is never an easy question to answer. A lot is going to depend on where our financial markets are by the time that these projects are ready to close on construction. I would be lying to all of you if I didn't expect that these projects might come forward and ask as, as a way to help project financing work for a tax to come along and be in a co-limited partners type of setting so that they could utilize the Housing Authority to help with property tax, either full exemption or a partial abatement in some way. But that has not been presented a hundred percent so far. It has been alluded to at concept endorsement that that might be something that we have to weigh as we're coming back to you and giving you updates with these projects as they're moving along. I, we, there are definitely opportunities for us to have further conversations about how property tax exemption works with affordable housing and to get in depth with that, and that is something that I'd link, um, I'd like for us to be able to discuss over the coming months and especially over the coming years as projects come forward. And, and it's something that I certainly, uh, early on was having conversations with our own county assessor's office about as sort of a, a collective way to come forward and maybe, dare I say, the dreaded one-on-one, but a little bit about property tax exemption one-on-one. Um, I, I would just, you know, again, reiterate, the answer is maybe it could be a deciding factor in whether or not these projects could go forward, yes, if they were not able to receive property tax exemption, but it's a little too early for me to know that just yet.
Yeah, see, I don't have a problem with a property tax exemption. I, I mean, if, if you can get what you want and you can give a little to get that, great. I mean, if we're talking about mixed income, maybe to get that to that level, you have to give a little tax abatement. But you also said co-ownership. In that case, the county does have a share of ownership of, of the property, which makes a difference.
Yeah.
Paul?
Well, that's kind of my point, and, and that's, and, and the only way I can, I could get to the point with the PetCor project is that in year sixty-one, which I raised earlier, we, we are the owner of the core project. Okay, that's a big deal. Um, so I, I don't know, I would, I would just beg you all to do the math, um, that if you, you know, if you, if the, if the taxpayers are paying out of their pockets on their property taxes for the homeless bond, the, the measure, the Metro bond that built this, and then we waive this on top of that, and then you do the math, the multiplier effect of that, I, I would caution, um, that you need to understand the financial impacts to the county. And you need to weigh that very, very seriously, especially if there's not ownership in year sixty-one.
Of course, there's a lot more people in Mo- Moa County, Washington County, within the metro region who are paying a lot more than we are, so our percentage would be lower. But anyway, Sonya?
If there aren't any other substantive questions, I would like to make a motion. Are we ready for that? I move, I move we approve the three project proposals recommended by Housing Authority of Clackamas County staff and submitted in response to the twenty-twenty notice of funding availability for Metro Affordable Housing Bond Funding and Authorization to move, authorization to forward to Metro for concept endorsement with the direction that as these projects move forward, we look at all of our goals, including the possibility of mixed income housing.
Second.
Do I have to repeat that? It's been moved that we approve the three project proposals as recommended. And, um, and it's not amended. Okay, so, any further discussion? I don't see any, so please poll, poll us.
Okay, um, Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
That, that's an aye, uh, Martha?
Yeah. Dog was barking. Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
I am, uh, very excited to say aye. These are great projects, and Stephen, Jill, and your staff have done an excellent job. Clackamas County is number one. Thank you. All right.
All right, next is the second, is the Housing Authority Discussion Item, Approval of Omnibus Resolution Number One-Nine-Four-Eight, authorizing the execution, acknowledgement, and delivery of documents for the Webster Road redevelopment project. And Rich will present again.
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead and take the lead. Uh, thank you again, Commissioners, for letting us bring this project back to you. Uh, this is in regards to our Webster Road project, which we alluded to a little bit earlier. Um, and the request for, uh, you all to authorize us entering into an omnibus resolution and authorizing the execution, acknowledgement, and delivery of documents for the Webster Road redevelopment project. I'll give a little bit of a recap to what I discussed the other day, and then open it up for questions. Um, again, uh, just some, some information about Webster Road. Uh, as you all know, we've made it through our, our initial land use process there. The site is zoned as R seven-point-two, low-density residential, but we have been granted a conditional use permit to move forward with our concept for delivery of forty-eight units serving households at fifty-five percent or above, uh, where we also have received some preliminary, uh, permanent supportive housing money from Oregon Housing and Community Services. We plan to have this building be fully vouchedered. In other words, each unit will have a project-based rental assistance to truly help out households at zero to thirty percent of area median income. That ties back into the discussion that I just had a minute ago about our overall goals to meet those minimum requirements with Metro. As you all may remember, this was our, uh, Clackamas County's awarded pilot project, um, so that we are moving forward with this project. Uh, you know, and we've got an early jump on it, uh, with Metro, which is why they, uh, early on granted us acquisition financing for it. Uh, we'll have, uh, as, as designed right now, we'll have a multitude of bicycle parking, which is part of the code, vehicle parking, uh, twenty-six spaces, two accessible, uh, sixteen standards, seven compact, and one loading zone, a total of forty-eight units, as I mentioned before, and a sustainability path, which I think is, uh, really exciting. The Earth Advantage Multifamily Home Gold Certification is our minimum standard. I think that with the energy efficiency measures brought in here and the way the building will operate, we should be able to get to platinum. That'll be fingers crossed on that. So that's an exciting, uh, feather in our cap as well. Uh, some key components of the resolution, again, uh, this is something that is standard practice in our industry, something that we've used uh, for projects that we've mentioned previous to this, Hillside Manor, uh, Clayton Moore Commons, which we now own, obviously, the PedCor building, Easton Ridge, a variety of different, uh, times that we've used an authorizing resolution or an omnibus resolution rate like this. It allows, uh, this particular resolution would allow HAC staff to apply for, um, four percent low-income housing tax credit with Oregon Housing and Community Services to serve this property, an application to Clackamas County's Community Development Department for, uh, home loan. Uh, a further application, because this is, we have to go through concept endorsement as well, uh, further application to Metro for housing bond funding to be able to arrive at, at final construction closing. And, uh, as mentioned before, uh, additional resources that may be available through the state as we move forward. It also provides delegation of authority to the Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services, the Executive Director of the Authority, and Housing, uh, Development as an authorized representative to act on behalf of the Authority in its own capacity as a special limited partner and as a sole member of the general partner to finalize the terms of execute, acknowledge, and deliver the actions and documents authorized. Rob Sullivan is our outside counsel on this. Rob has worked with us many times before on several projects with the Housing Authority. Rob is the author of this, uh, authorizing resolution and worked on it in conjunction with comments, uh, from county council as we've moved forward. Again, staff recommends that the board approve Resolution Nineteen-Forty-Eight, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents in connection with funding applications, pre-development documents, and signing authority for the Webster Road redevelopment project, and I would open it up to see if you had any additional questions.
Ken? Yes, uh, and I, my apologies, Mr. Chairman, but Stephen brought up a point for this project, uh, that, uh, made my ears perk up. I appreciate, you know, your attempt to go from, to get gold standard, environmental standards in this project, and hopefully platinum. Do those also apply to the previous three projects that we discussed?
Oh, yeah, it's a great point. Um, yes, they do. Each one of those projects, that was a main tenet of our, our NOFA, and each one of those projects will be seeking a high-level environmental and, and energy efficiency.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. That was my only question.
Paul?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna ask you the same question, Stephen, uh, that I did on the last one. So, uh, we're the owner of this development?
In this case, yes, we are.
We're the developer?
In this, yes, we are.
Okay. And, um, and so we're the owner, so it's, we're, we're owner on day one and day sixty-one and so on, so forth?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I appreciate all the work on this. I, I really do. Um, I'm, I'm gonna have a hard time voting yes for this, only for the reason that I brought up on Tuesday, um, and had concerns of, on last Thursday, and that is that, and I asked the administrator for something in the middle. Um, my issue is the om, not the project itself, but just the omnibus aspect of finding a mechanism that we can keep informed of any excursions from what was or how the project's going that are sizable, and in this case, the cost per unit went up significantly. And, um, you know, and I, I think I wanna have some adequate, be informed adequately, but there's need to be, there needs to be something that, a policy or something that is, that will make that happen, assure that happens, and, and absent that right now, um, and absent a mechanism to do that, I'm gonna have a hard time supporting the omnibus element of this proposal.
Can, can I, um, state, we're, we're gonna commit to the board that the Housing Authority will come to you monthly with general updates on all of these developments. There's a lot happening, and I wanna make sure you all feel comfortable. So, any, any, I guess we need to work on how to, um, define substantial, but I think you just need general updates every month moving forward for the next several years. We've got a lot of development happening.
Well, you know, I, I appreciate that, Jill, and if it, if it includes something that has specifics, especially when it comes to the financing and the cost, um, that are not general, I don't think those are really general. I, I'm not looking for a general, everything's going fine. We've had that, and we didn't get the update. So I just wanna be, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm trying to make a point here, but it's not just about making the point, it's about getting a result, and the result being adequate reporting. We are the stewards. Ultimately, we are the stewards of the, of the monies that are involved here, and we have that responsibility, and I think we need to, we need to to be able to answer those questions and know, and, and, and I need to feel good that we're monitoring that as a commissioner. I'm on behalf of, of the citizens of this county. Um, and I, I, I just think we have that responsibility, and I just need, I just need something that is firm and clear as to getting that, and, and, and the word general doesn't do it for me.
Okay, I'm assuming, um, general would include financial updated information, so we, we can work with you on a format for reporting on projects that the board feels comfortable with.
Okay, so we've got Sonya and then Ken?
Yeah, I would just suggest that when we approve this, we just also give the direction that we will be updated on, um, any, you know, monthly, and if there are any substantial changes to the development. And I think that's easy enough to do. I would really like to have all of our support on this, but I absolutely agree with Commissioner Savas that we need to take a more active role in understanding every step of the process and really support that. So I really appreciate him bringing that up. Thank you, Paul.
Ken?
Yeah, um, I, I think the key in, in this is, is if there's major changes in the, in, just to use as an example, the cost per door, okay, which obviously was the big one in this particular project, um, from beginning to this point. That we know it in advance with enough time to evaluate and make a decision and not be backed into a corner where we must make a decision and we only have one day to do so. I think that the ability to, to digest it and deliberate on it, uh, and maybe look for alternatives, if, if they're available, is, is what's needed, uh, in, in a reporting situation like this. Um, to tell us that it's gone from two hundred dollars to four hundred dollars, and we have no time to make an evaluation or anything else, that is problematic. So I'm just asking that you consider that, we were very likely gonna have to discuss and evaluate, and there needs to be time, um, at least a few days to give us an opportunity to digest any changes of that nature. I hope that that, I think that, I hope that that helps, uh, in dealing with Paul's concerns.
Paul?
I think that, you know, from the beginning of, of finding the property to this point forward, um, there's a lot of opportunity, and I, you know, on Tuesday, you know, I think a, a good point was made that, you know, um, and I think I asked a question, could we have just raised the building and built a multi-story building and got a lower cost per unit for, uh, or a lower cost per door by and build more units there and actually satisfy a lot of our, 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 our needs for housing, which is a more goal. And I, you know, I heard staff respond saying, well, that's, you know, that would, that the zoning didn't allow that, but we didn't actually, I don't think, really, I don't remember, maybe we did, but, um, I, I think had we actually explored that more aggressively with the city and say, hey, we'd like to have a, uh, a zone change, or we'd like to have a, a waiver of something, we didn't do that. I mean, I think the, the same thing applied in Milwaukee, uh, on Jim on your property. Um, uh, the developer asked for, um, a, a waiver of a particular requirement. Um, and, and the city granted that waiver in Milwaukee. So, um, and, and that's not an affordable housing unit. You know, that's market, that's market rate of, of facility, uh, on Jim's property. Um, but, um, the, 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 I would be inclined to think that maybe the City Council of Gladstone would perhaps welcome that. I, I don't know, but that's just speculation. That ship sailed. I get that. I'm gonna go out, I'm gonna go out on a limb with my colleagues, and I'm gonna support this today, but I, I'm gonna ask, and I'm looking at Commissioner Fisher especially, I'm gonna ask that my colleagues work with staff on some firm guidelines in which we will get reporting and, and certain metrics that will be reported to us. I don't wanna micromanage a project. I don't wanna see every contract signed. That's not my goal. It is the key high-level things that, that, that require somewhat, somewhat a level of stewardship and responsibility with public funds. And, and so if I could get a commitment, head nod for my colleagues, I'll, I'll support it today.
I'm okay with that.
So, uh, by the way, Milwaukee already had it in code that they could, uh, make amendments, and that was parking. If they did inside parking, they could go. That they could, uh, make amendments and that was parking. If they did inside parking, they could go up a level. Anyway, so, um, with that, uh, oh, Sonia, you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, so Paul, I'm thinking about adding on to this motion with direction to staff to keep the board. Updated on any substantial changes and also on a monthly basis. Will that be? Good to add to the current motion? Does that meet the need?
It's essentially direction to staff.
Yeah, so Paul, does that, does that satisfy? I really want to make.
I was actually looking for, wants from the administrator, um, or the director.
Yes, let me handle this. So Commissioners, I don't feel that it's necessary for you to put that in the motion. You've given me clear direction. I am responsible to you and Rich Swift as a director is responsible to me and Jill is responsible to him. So you have just made it very clear your intention. That is, I am now accountable to you to providing that information. I don't feel you need to put that in a motion. You've just made it clear to me. So. I am now responsible for ensuring you get what you need.
You left Stephen out. Who's he responsible to?
All right, then with that, I will go ahead and move that we approve the Omnibus Resolution number one nine four eight. Authorizing the execution, acknowledgement and delivery of documents for the Webster Road Development Redevelopment Project.
Second.
It's been moved in second to that we approved the Omnibus Resolution number nineteen forty-eight authorized exec. Execution, acknowledgement, delivery of documents for the Webster Road Redevelopment Project. Any further discussion? Richard Swift, you have your hand up.
Oh, you guys go ahead and vote now and then I can say.
All right, so please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Steve, I mean, Richard.
Uh, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board for, uh, the votes that have been cast for, for all of these projects today. This is. Really truly historic for this county and I, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the leadership of this board. Um, in this space. And also I want to acknowledge the work that Jill and Stephen did this, in particular Stephen, in terms of the lift that has gone. In regards to pushing this, um, this money out and what we're gonna see in, in the county. This is, this is absolutely outstanding. And, and awesome. Thank you so much.
Good job on your part.
I, I had little to do. All I did was just say yes when Joe's, um, wanted to hire Stephen.
I think that was a really good call, frankly.
One of the most important things we do in our jobs is, is who we hire. So, thank you.
So with that, I'd like to announce that the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. For the remainder of the meeting and thank you guys. See you next time.
Thank you all.
All right, Gary, what's up?
And next is the consent agenda. I'll ask Mary, our clerk, to please read the consent.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number Four to the Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement. With Friends of Estacada Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of Amendment Number Four to Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with Foothills Community Church. Molala Adult Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a subrecipient ag- agreement, Amendment Number One with Legal Aid Services of Oregon to provide housing rights. And referral and legal assistance for Clackamas County residents. Approval of Amendment Number Four to the Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Sandy. Senior and Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a subrecipient grant, Amendment Number Two with Community Living Above to provide youth. Marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in Westland-Wilsonville. Under the Department of Transportation and Development. Approval to apply for a transportation growth management grant to update for pedestrian and bicycle master plans. Approval of Avaloid Software Corporation software. As a service agreement and procurement of software services from H, S H I International Corporation. Under our Finance Department, approval of a grant agreement number one zero zero three. With the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services for Coronavirus Relief Fund. Under elected officials or requests by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to accept a grant from the United States Department of Justice. Bureau of Justice Assistance for reimbursement related to Clackamas County COVID-nineteen response. Under Technology Services, approval to purchase an annual technical, tech, technical support services from. Oracle America Inc. for PeopleSoft. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, District, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. And Clackamas Community College for community-based instructional programs. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas Community College. For educational and enrichment services. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, do any Commissioners wish to poll an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next portion is our public communication and Dylan Blay, Blaylock will, uh, be on the screen here and. He's gonna facilitate the, the, uh, public communication portion of this meeting. Dylan?
Great, thank you very much Chair Bernard. I'm Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs and I'll be coordinating general comment for those in the Zoom audience today. If any attendees would like to provide a comment, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're on the phone, but I don't believe we have anyone on the phone. No, we don't. Uh, let me see, and Chair, I also have one email thus far to relay after we take any Zoom, uh, Zoom calls. So again, you can, if you have a question and I see we do have a hand up, please use your raise hand feature on Zoom to let me know that you have one. Looks like our first, uh, question or comment today is going to come from Pamela White. So Pamela, if you can go, or at least that's the name on the handle. Pamela, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself, great. And then please provide your name, your area and your question or comment for Commissioners in three minutes or less. Thank you very much. Ooh, are you there Pamela? Pamela, I do see that you unmuted yourself, so if we, but we cannot hear you, so.
Who are you?
There.
Whoever was just speaking and had your hand up, that is it.
Am I the one that's supposed to be speaking?
Yes.
Yes, please go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? Cause I keep, you keep going in and out.
Yes, we can hear you. So please go ahead with your comments or questions.
Great. Well, good morning Chair Bernard and Commissioners. I have been watching you all morning and now I can't see you. So that's fun. Um, nothing like having, um, our technology to make our lives easier. Well, I'm here this morning just to let you know a little bit about a coalition. Um, and actually Simon Fuller is here too. Um, I just beat him to the hands up, I guess. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about, um. Our coalition, the Safe Kids Coalition and what we're doing these days. You know, on any given day in America, kids in general are exposed to potential trauma inducing information and images. But today's political unrest and worldwide pandemic are just, you know, the tip of the iceberg for kids experiencing things like. Child abuse and neglect, exposure to domestic violence, chronic homelessness, parents with depression. Family members being incarcerated, another traumatic childhood event. It's these events known as the adverse childhood experiences or ACEs that must be mitigated. And that we are working to mitigate for children and families so that our communities can thrive. As a result of these studies, these well-known groundbreaking ACEs studies, we have ample documentation of the impact. Of child maltreatment on the health and well-being of child survivors across their lifespan. The data tells us that physical and emotional toxic stress resulting from maltreatment can lead to risky behaviors. Chronic health conditions, mental health issues, substance use, low academic achievement, incarceration, limited life potential. And even early death. Additionally, a two thousand twelve study shows us that new cases of child maltreatment. Eight alone. Would account for a national economic. Lost you. Lifetime loss of a hundred and twenty-four billion.
Pamela, we are not understanding what you said.
Oh no.
Uh, we understood most of it until the last part.
Oh, okay, so the hundred and thirty-nine billion?
Yeah, we didn't hear that.
Thank you. So in two thousand twelve, um, there was a study that showed new cases in the year of two thousand eight. Of child malt treatment and that year alone would account for a national economic lifetime loss. Of the equivalent of a hundred and thirty-nine billion in today's dollar. Um, and that's just for child malt treatment. When you include things like domestic violence, mental illness, substance abuse in the family. Um, that would just be, that calculation would add to that. So, we believe this research is not just a highly, are we okay now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we believe this reaches, is not just, um, a useful framework for understanding the impact. That ACEs have on individuals, but also a call to action for our community. So the, um, Safe Kids Coalition, we're working together and that includes, uh, Parrot Creek right now, that, that group. Parrot Creek Children's Center, Clackamas Women's Services, uh, Clackamas County Casa and Northwest Family Services. Um, and so, we know that one in ten children have experienced child malt treatment. And that is about eleven percent of our community's young people. Uh, the Safe Kids Coalition is working really hard to mitigate that statistic. Uh, because we want to have a safer, healthy community forever. So thanks for letting me share with you how we're working together to make that happen.
Thank you Pamela.
Chair, I see there's a hand raised by a Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, Martha.
Hey Pamela, nice to talk to you. It's too bad we have to wait for Zoom meetings. And hi Simon. So Pamela, you're a school board member of Oregon City School District and I, I've been. Okay, dogs ran into the other room. They always bark when I have something significant to say. I just have to say, it's like magic. Or maybe not so significant to say. So my, my question is this, you know, have you talked to the Clackamas Education Service District? And all of these superintendents, because they had approached us a while back. Um, about an after-school program that to me was important because it's a conduit. Oftentimes our teaching community, our education community is the first line that actually reports and sees some of the issues that you folks. Um, as our nonprofit infrastructure, um, you know, deal with. So what are the plans? And of course now with COVID-nineteen and all the uncertainty of how. We're gonna get back to school, let alone after-school programs. Um, what are you doing, uh, with this coalition to involve, um, the Education Service District? And all of our superintendents who also have expressed an interest, obviously a, a natural interest in child welfare. You didn't mention part of the coalition, so I was just asking about.
They aren't part of the, the technical coalition, but we are working with them and in fact, we are reaching out to them as we speak and, um, are. Having conversations with Jada at the, at the E S D and, um. The Oregon City, uh, School Board is already talking about it. So I'm on that board, though it was Martha Spire's, our chair, who, um. Introduced the, you know, the concern of, uh, taking steps for these kids. So. Um, right now, we're reaching out to all of our city councillors. We're reaching out all of our, our community members to try and get them engaged. In talking about how we can work together to, to help kids.
Do, do you anticipate having the endorsements of all the superintendents as you move forward?
I can't answer that right now. We're just, we're talking, I, I know that, um, and we are reaching out to elected officials at this point as well as the superintendent. So, I can't answer that. I know that we have, I know that Oregon City is positive.
Right, right. I would expect.
This is a new process, so we're, we're, uh, a new. We're getting on board. We're working every day. We just haven't finished that process.
Well, I will tell you, I feel remiss in not talking about this sooner to this group. I have not been directly involved in it, although I was one of the founders of the. Children's Center and have worked with Clackamas Women's Services for a number of years and actually served on the board. But I'm, it's gonna stress, it's gonna be very important that you get, uh, those folks, our super. And our school communities on board and I do apologize for not pushing this forward. A lot sooner than I should have. So that's my bad, but I would strongly say that in order for this to pass, I know that you've done polling. The polling looks good, but you're really going to have to expand the coalition to make sure that the people on the front lines, our teachers, our educators. Our school boards, our superintendents, um, are going to be an integral part of this effort to really serve the children in our community. So that's my, um, nice to talk to you. Okay.
Nice to talk to you too. And, and yes, we are doing those things and we agree that it's important and we agree that what they were looking for is important. And we intend to support them as well as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, next, uh, thank you for that Pamela. Next up is Simon Fullford, I believe. Pamela just referenced, uh, Simon, but we will go ahead and bring Simon in. Okay. Simon, if you are there, great. Thank you for muting. If you could provide your name, uh, your area and keep your comment to three minutes or under. Thank you very much.
Sure. This is Simon Fullford, Executive Director of Parrot Creek Child and Family Services. And also Acting, uh, Executive Director of the In Home. Um, you can all hear me? Just give a thumbs up, making sure. Um, really, so yes, um, very much echoing and endorsing everything that Pamela just said. Um, speaking on behalf of the Safe Kids Coalition. Um, so I don't think I could add a whole lot more, but I, I. On Martha, on your point, very well taken and a number of us in the coalition, you know, work directly in schools. Which currently right now is, is an interesting, uh, kind of dilemma and dynamic. Um, and, and it is true that our schools are often the kind of first line of, of defense and certainly. Um, the first set of eyes and ears that, that see children, um, can see and identify abuse and neglect that is occurring. And, and flag that up to whomever would be an appropriate response. And we're obviously in very different times now with COVID-nineteen. And, and the role that schools can play in that is really changing and I agree, we, we are and should be in touch with school districts on. How we can adapt. And I think one of the roles that the coalition members and the, the whole community-based nonprofits can play. Is when children are less in school and possibly not at all or very limited amounts. It's really your community-based nonprofits with those community connections and relationships, which may be those other eyes and ears that do pick up on. On the needs of children that aren't being seen in other kind of formal systems of care and support. So it's almost within, in this new dynamic of COVID, where kids are less involved in some of the formal structures that we have in society. That the kind of community-based access to them is probably gonna be much more important. Um, and, and, you know, we had talked before and I think, you know, it's come before the, the board, there's been a, there was a dip. In child welfare referrals, um, as everything shut down and there were less of these eyes and ears on kids. And we're beginning as things are kind of quote unquote opening up and I, I listened to a lot of your commentary earlier with the increase in cases. But, you know, child welfare referrals are increasing and, and I'm sure that referrals, you know, of identified abuse and neglect. Will, is increasing. We know domestic violence is horribly, um, increased. And as a real working example, um, Parrot Creek had the local DHS and even through the Salem office referred. To us, the same youth five times over the last couple of months. Um, to our residential program and unfortunately each time we said, in our current service design. We cannot meet this young person's needs as much as we would like to. We know how to work for this youth. We would know what. We know how to work with this youth. We would know what he needs, but in our current structure, it doesn't exist, but we can work with you to create that. And I think that's really the role that the Safe Kids Coalition will play, is really identifying some of those unmet needs in our communities and the services that we know are needed for kids to keep them safe and filling those gaps and making sure that those services are there. So I'm going to end there and really just really appreciate always your great questions and the guidance that you provide, and obviously, your advocacy for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. All right, Dylan.
Very good. I do see that we've had people join us since since we just started here with the session. So I'll just remind people who are in Zoom room, if you would like to go ahead and hit the raise hand feature on Zoom, it lets me know that you have a comment or a question. And if you're on the phone, because we do have a phone listener now, if you're interested in giving a comment or question, or providing a question, just hit star nine. That lets me know. In the meantime, Chair, I will go to the one email that we have received. It is from Laura Harris. I will read it exactly as it came in. Question, where can the tenant find honest legal assistance in Clackamas County when filing a civil complaint against the landlord who uses friends and acquaintances in authority to help conspire against the tenant or you personally? Racial racial injustice was enforced when seeking legal assistance for the eviction and civil complaint by people in authoritative positions that work for Clackamas County, Karen Baskin as a judge and Ken Roberts as a sheriff. Also, private practice attorneys and legal organizations are practicing and enforcing discriminatory practices. One is by telling you, quote, "It's a conflict of interest," end quote. Some of the organizations are the OSB, Legal Aid, Legal Shield, CAT, and many others. I would like to know what you plan to do about enforcing injustice. Please note, I've been blacklisted by most legal professionals. You can follow my case to see how injustice is practiced. My newspaper ad has offered a thousand dollars for anyone who knows an honest attorney that's willing to work.
I know some honest attorneys. All right.
Chair, so our staff has been involved with providing resources and support to this individual, and will continue to offer that. And so our staff has been trying to help and provide some resources.
All right.
And I see we do have one hand that has gone up from the from the person who has joined us on over the phone. So I cannot see the person's name, but if you are on the phone with the last digits of zero zero seven four, you are on with commissioners. So please go ahead, please give your name, your address, and keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you very much.
Well, maybe you can recognize the voice since you don't know who I am. It's less cool and appreciate the opportunity. A couple of thoughts and observations. One is, I know that the county, under the leadership of Mr. Schmidt and others, is working on eventually having live meetings. I certainly encourage anything that can be done to make that happen in the future. Zoom has been an adequate adequate substitute, but it's really not the same as real live meetings. And I know that seating would be limited, et cetera. But as we move forward, one of my concerns is that the public isn't really that engaged or aware or involved in all of the spending and all of the decisions that are being made. And that that disconnect is furthered by a format that tends to make it more difficult for them to participate. I've noticed that if I if I want to find the Zoom meeting, if I want to join the meeting, if if I'd never been to on the website, I I'd struggle to figure out, how do I click in? How do I get there? So one big question is, as long as we're continuing with Zoom meetings, let's get the link to the meeting at the top of the page, or or somehow married up with next to the packet or on the agenda page, because it's sometimes hard to figure out how to get in. And I've had a couple of folks call me frustrated that they weren't quite sure how to weigh in. The other thing I would mention, back to my original point, is that obviously, regardless of how we're we're conducting meetings, there's a tremendous amount of money being promised, decisions being made about transportation, a tentative initial approval for hundreds of millions of dollars in borrowing for a courthouse. And obviously, earlier in the meeting, we saw a scenario where, while it's the housing authority, it's still the public's money, and the commission acts as the Housing Authority Board. And in the discussion, you can see that millions and millions and millions of dollars are involved in these decisions and investments. And the money is borrowed, just like the stimulus money, as they call it. We are borrowing ourselves into oblivion, and that is a very deep concern out there. And offering more freebies or solving a TriMet Max crime problem by giving free rides to people and and further spending is taking away from the source of the money that government needs. So I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That was my, the only email I got before that, and seeing no other hands, Chair. Seeing none, Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to county administrator updates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to share some really good news that a employee of our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District received. And it really demonstrates how, as public employees, we get to really impact and influence the lives of young people. So this is in honor of Jason Kemrich, who is a supervisor at the North Clackamas Aquatic Park, an employee of our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. And he received a note from one of his former employees, Leah, who was an aquatic park lifeguard. The note says, about ten years ago, Leah started working at the aquatic park. Just wanted to update you and brag a bit about Leah. She has since graduated as a doctor of clinical psychology and is starting a post-doc program in Vancouver with Clark County Juvenile Justice Center and the Evergreen School District, starting in September. I'm writing to thank you and the aquatic park for employing Leah ten years ago and being such a good mentor and wonderful influence. I still remember how distraught she was when she failed her first lifeguard rescue test. Jason called her that night, told her not to worry about it, and that she could take the test again. Leah took the test again and passed on her next attempt, and that really impacted Leah and her self-esteem. I want you to know what a great influence you have been, Jason, to Leah's self-esteem and all of the youth working at the park. Having a second chance and the good references you gave her to her colleges have contributed to her success. What a wonderful story to share. So thank you, Jason, and all our employees, especially those who work with young people, to help mold and influence their life. That is my good news for you today, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Communications. And first up, Sonia.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's a lot going on in our communities between COVID, between children five and up, wearing face masks, further rollbacks of restrictions on places of business, such as Phase Two communities and and bars closing now at ten eight, ten P M., not ten A M. And also, we can't ignore what's happening around our country and in our neighboring county, Monloma County, and the city of Portland, with the unrest and the protests, the rioting, and the presence of of federal officers. So I've been thinking a lot about, I was, let's see, I was two years old on the day that Martin Luther King, April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight, when he which is a is a day when Martin Luther King was was assassinated. So I think a lot about Martin Luther King and when I was just coming into the world, this is sort of a compass and a place of where I gather inspiration. And one quote that he said from the letter from the Birmingham jail is, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. So we, as a board, haven't had the opportunity to discuss what's happening with the presence of federal officers. I would love to hear what my other commissioners are hearing. Yes, we read, we read what's in the media, and we get very divergent information. If we look at our, if your social medias, like my social media, I have a lot of different perspectives and some firsthand accounts of what's happening in Portland are very, very divergent. I serve on the Health and Human Services Committee of the Association of Oregon Counties with Dr., lawyer, commissioner Sharon Myron, who has been there on the front lines and was described in my call yesterday with her, what it was like to be there, observe what she observed, and to be tear gassed and what that felt like and what that meant for her individually. And I've been reaching out to others who have firsthand knowledge, people that I know, people that I trust. I would love to hear what you are all hearing and saying, because I am so concerned and conflicted. I don't want to see the trampling of our constitutional rights, and at the same time, I don't want to do anything that somehow endorses the behavior of destruction in any of our communities. So would love to hear what you're thinking, very much so. I am, I'm going to be on the phone with Angela Brandonberg right after this call. If any commissioner wants to join me in just the conversation, I'll dial you in. I think our, it's so important that we really focus on how connected we all are in not only our tri-county region, but in the state of Oregon and across the country, and that we have accurate information. We make informed decisions, and we use our voice, our voice of advocacy effectively and 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 informed, informed with real with real information. So that's what I have today. If anybody wants to say what they're thinking, I would welcome it. I miss everyone, and I'm sorry that we didn't talk about this on our last, on Tuesday. So that's what I got.
Yeah, what I had planned to speak today about with regards to last Thursday when the Metro Council passed the their their, took the vote to put on, to refer to the voters, the transportation measure. And my comments were along the lines of what I had said a couple, three weeks ago, when the Board of County Commissioners in Clackamas adopted or approved the letter, the MOUs and so forth for the measure. And my comments were somewhat similar, but my closing comments basically was that this really leaves Clackamas County woefully underserved, whether you look at the transit element particularly, or you look at other facets. But what I really want to talk about is is the transit element. As I listen to communities talk about, you know, our our mix of different populations, our diversity and our population, that, and and the people that I talk to, that some people can't afford to own a car, and 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 some people actually have to choose a different job because they're stuck with transit, limited transit in Clackamas County, and the transit only takes them where they can go. So the job that they may want is really a job that they could probably have, but they just can't get there. So they're forced to take a different job, a job that's within reach of transit, if they are lucky enough in Clackamas County to be near the transit line to begin with. And that's not the case as well for lots and lots of people. So the fact that the region continually seems to discount our needs, the fact that we still have a undersized transportation system compared to our neighboring county to the north, and we continue to seem to be on getting inadequate support for our needs. And our our population is growing. Our population of low-income people is growing. We have more Title I schools today than we had in the past. Poverty and people struggling. Multi-generation families, folks that are retired are trying to stay in their homes. And the increase of property taxes, the increase of the household cost per family, it continues to grow. And that's a serious concern. I think that if we can bring any value or speak to the plight of a lot of people that are struggling, especially now with the COVID situation, especially now that, I mean, I I started on Friday just counting the businesses in Clackamas County, and it permanently closed. And I easily came well over ten of some sizable, recognizable names of businesses, and the list is far longer than that. So I'm going to be compiling the names and start reading off the names here in the coming weeks of some of the businesses that have closed due to the economics. But the same, the same economic pressures are, again, affecting the families that are in Clackamas County. And if if transit is never going to come our way in our lifetime, any added, any added increase in coverage, what I mean by coverage is areas that don't have coverage today, don't have transit today. And as I, as I hear more and more, some of the transportation agencies or experts tell us that it's probably not going to come to Clackamas County anytime soon. And anytime soon is perhaps for decades. So what we have for today for transit lines isn't going to increase. We're not going to see any increase in transit. And I I I feel for, and I struggle with why we would, why we would toll Interstate two oh five and suggest that we do congestion pricing, basically, because people should use other forms of transportation. And in that stretch, there is no alternative. People are trapped. They need to go back and forth to work. They need to make a living. They need to feed their kids. They need to take care of themselves, and and they're going to be told in a county that is not going to get any transit in the future on that, on that particular stretch of road or anywhere else. How is that fair? I don't think it's fair. I don't think that it's fair that the state allows that to happen. I don't know, fair, I don't think it's fair that the region allows it to happen. I don't think it's fair to our neighboring counties that don't support us. I don't think it's fair when it comes to the CARES Act money from the governor, that we don't even have a response or why we're not getting the resources. Why is it that Clackamas County seems not to get the support or any equitable share of transportation, of COVID CARES Act money? Why is that? I I struggle with that. That that's, as I, as I go on my walks every day, I I am just embroiled in in the in the struggling with this this one particular issue. And it seems now it's at a heightened state. The politics now is at a heightened state. And I I just realized that our position is what's what to do or protect or be or work for the best interest of the of the citizens of this Clackamas County. And I don't know how we do that as a commission. As we walk into our retreat or prepare for our retreat on Monday, maybe that's not a topic we can talk about, but I think it's a topic we ought to go in there thinking about. What is in the best interest of this county? And why is it that we, why is it that our state government and our regional partners are not taking that into account? What is in the best interest? What is the fairest thing for all? I I don't see any advocacy. Thank you.
Ken.
Ken has fallen off the meeting, and I don't know if that was on purpose or not. He's not rejoined, so.
Okay. So Martha, if Ken joins, we'll bring him back.
Ken had a personal issue he needed to deal with, and he won't be back.
Okay, thank you.
I've had a really busy week. I wanted to update all of you that I attended the National Associations of Counties Business Meeting. We have a new second vice president, who's a wonderful woman and a personal friend, Nise Winfrey. She was voted in by acclamation. She's going to be a wonderful president in hard times. Mary Ann Borgeson is the outgoing president. She did a phenomenal job under really trying circumstances, because half of her half of her work within National Association, which is essential for us, because they're advocating at the federal level, at every level for transportation dollars and for COVID support and everything else you can imagine. They are a constant voice for us with Congress and with with Congress and with the key individuals there on committees to get counties, not just Clackamas County, but counties across the United States, the resources we need due to the delivery services we need. So I'm grateful I was a part of that. I was lucky. I did get my vice chairmanships back, so I continue to be Vice Chairman of Community and Economic Development, Vice Chairman of the International Trade Initiative. I continue to serve on the Veterans Committee, and I continue to be involved in that. So it was an honor for the incoming president from Kentucky, who has at least allowed me to continue in that, those roles for the benefit of our county and for the benefit of counties across the nation. So that's significant. The other thing I wanted to mention is I had an opportunity, as many of you know, I'm in the middle of stamp for the beginning, I'm going to mention that again. Dr. Kendai from Brown University, I did send you all a link, I don't know if you got it, but I was able to get on a virtual national conversation with Dr. Kendai as the person who is now one of the foremost scholars on racism. It was fascinating. He is intelligent, he's bright, he is really reframing the history of racism in our country. And I was gratified that I could at least listen in on that virtual conversation. And I'm still trying to push to see if we can't do something similar here in Clackamas County, particularly because I know we've had conversations with the Join Group. I think having our county with our colleagues around the state help with, potentially with AOC as well, help host a larger conversation. Listening to him, it was not only just national, across the United States, it was also international. We had people calling in from Australia, New Zealand. So this is not just high on our priority list, it's becoming a global conversation. So with that, I just wanted to mention the book again. I'm in this section and it's really dealing with the 1850s right now. And that's when you had people like William Lloyd Garrison, Frederick Douglass, Sojourner Truth, actually starting to speak out. But even then, the folks who were anti-abolitionists were criticized, you know, were, were, or, excuse me, who were abolitionists were criticized by one person in particular, and he was Martin R. Delaney. And he was an individual who went to Harvard, was admitted, a black, black man into Harvard Medical School, but when the other students protested, he and another fellow black students were dismissed. So even though at that time, in the 1850s, people were working towards abolition, he had, he had a criticism that I think helps put everything into context. And he said, "The abolitionists presume to think for or dictate to, and know better, what is suited for colored people than they know for themselves." So when we talk about institutional racism, there's a nuance there. There's a nuance that even as we move through our history, there was a sense that those who had power or those who were in control actually were still dictating to the people who were oppressed what they needed to do. And part of that was there were suggestions to recolonize, to say, "Well, in order for you to really have true equality, you have to have your own place to go to. You have to have your own whatever." And that was actually opposed by most of the African-American population. Once they were here, once our folks were here, they wanted to stay here, they wanted to be a part of this nation. So I'm just saying, when you talk about it, it's a much more subtle criticism, of course. It moved. It moved this movement towards equality and equity forward, but it still, it still had those undertones of, who knew better? And one of the really biggest spokes during that time, if I can find the quote from the book, was Frederick Douglass. And I had an opportunity to visit his home when I was in DC at one time, and it was absolutely phenomenal. Okay, so here's what he had to say during the same time period. "Hold it to be the privilege of the Anglo-Saxon to enslave and oppress the African," he went on. "When men oppress their fellow men, the oppressor ever finds in the character of the oppressed a full justification for his oppression." Okay? And so in Kendi's words, he says, "Douglass amazingly summed up the history of racist ideas in a single sentence." So I do admire people that are on the ground, but for me, in order to address this problem, I, I really have to have the larger historical context. I have to understand what the threat has been through our American history as we move forward with this, and what needs to be changed, and what needs to be, what needs to be done. I know there's been a lot of talk about defunding public safety, but I would say public safety needs to have the resources it needs to be educated on de-escalation, to be educated on the history of what we do. So I keep thinking, if we're going to change a paradigm of how we treat people of color in this country, why don't we really look at the institutional change that needs to happen with our new sheriff-elect, Angie Brandenburg, with people who are in public safety? So that's just an idea I have. It might be kind of radical. I suspect some people, I don't know if they'll be upset with it. But I am coming from that perspective, thinking that sea change or at the cusp where I think that sea change can actually happen to us. Other than that, I did want to give a brief report from Greater Portland, Inc. I attended the meeting the other day. Thank you, Chair Bernard, for allowing me to kind of start working with them. They're very worried about downtown Portland. They are also seeing a closure of a number of minority businesses because of the unrest down there. And they are trying to be part of the solution. They're constantly contacting the governor's office. They're trying to work with the county. They're trying to work with Portland Business Alliance to try and figure out how to maintain a solid business core. They're losing businesses, and the trend is that the folks that aren't closing are actually moving to the suburban area. So they're having some significant issues with the core of Portland because of the unrest. So I don't know what the answer is. I do think that the federal government here has added a whole other layer of complexity to all of this. And I'm just hoping that we, as leaders, can move forward and maybe continue to build trust and continue to wrestle with these ideas. So that's my report for the day, and thank you.
Thank you. You know, as far as what's going on downtown Portland, you know, we got an email from somebody who owns property in Clackamas County but lives in California.
Yeah, I remember.
Huh? Yeah, they're worried about the safety of, of a piece of property they own in Clackamas County, and they're 35 minutes away. I think that we need to work better on communicating where these instances are occurring versus, you know, it sounds like the whole area is burning, and it's a disaster. I think that the only way you're going to stop the federal government right now is to stop everything and walk away, let them leave. And that's pretty much what was going to happen until the federal government stepped in. And I think it's wrong, it's unconstitutional for a military, milit, they aren't exactly military, but militaristic organization in a city in the United States of America battling our own people is wrong, and they need to leave. I thought about going down there. Matter of fact, there's a call for elected officials to go down on Friday. I don't plan on going. I don't like tear gas. I actually experienced that when I was 17 down in Oregon, when my brother was going there, and the riots were, they were burning down the wrong buildings in Eugene, accidentally, and Ed's roommate would come home every night all gassed. And I parked above Eugene and watched the fires burning. It, it doesn't solve anything. I think we've heard we're going to work hard to fix the damage that we have done to people of color throughout the last 400 years. And those folks who are here, who have made this country great, we depend on them. I'm cutting the, the police department by 50%. I, my guess is Clackamas County Sheriff, 50% of the sheriff's budget is the jail. I wouldn't be surprised. It's somewhere around there. I don't know, Paul, you know? But it's a lot. I don't know how you would do that. We need to invest money in, in educating and training police officers about the injustice, about not doing things like kneeling on somebody's neck. I mean, did you see the, on TV where they, there was this big guy, and they just kept beating on him? As he stood there, he acted like he never felt it, but his arm was broken. And why? And it's a terrible situation, but we got to end it soon, because Portland, it's all over the media now, all over the country, Portland's this terrible place, and tourism is going to be dead. And the bigger picture is that we need to put this to rest and rebuild our community the right way. And that includes resolving our relationship with folks of color and building a society where we can all be proud of one another. So I'd also like to announce that the 2020 Small Grant Cycle is now opening, open for applications. In an effort to make these grants available to as many communities as possible, we have translated the information and the application to five languages, Spanish, Russian, Vietnamese, Chinese, and Korean. We also have extended the application period, August 10th to August 13th at 5:00 p.m. This year, aside from giving priority to projects that well-serve populations located within Clackamas County's Community Prosperity Collaborative, North Clackamas, Estacada, and Camby will also be prioritizing the following criteria: to fill an unanticipated expense gap due to COVID-19, focus on serving Black and Indigenous and people of color, encourage partnerships to increase community impact. And if you need more information, you can contact Caroline Hill at 503-655-8261, or email her at carolinehill@clackamas.us. With that, for the betterment of all, have a great, safe, healthy weekend, and stay home and stay safe. Bye.